Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council for November 6, 2018. At this time, I'd like to ask you to bow your heads in invocation time form. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the time to seek your wisdom and to request guidance, civility, compassion, in a time where we can consider wisely the choices we have in front of us so that we can serve the people of the town of Apex. We thank you for the brave men and women who have fought for us and our freedom in this country, and some have sacrificed greatly. We pray all these things in your holy name. Amen. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Apex Town Council. When you came in, there was a podium on your right. It has a stapled agenda that looks like this. If you missed it, feel free to jump up and go get one now, no problem. Also, if you intend to speak tonight, there's two things of yellow that you need to know about. One is the guidelines that are printed on the Yellow Sheet that's also on the podium, and if you did not get one, you should scoot out there and get one so you can familiarize yourself with it. The other thing you need to do is make sure you have signed the appropriate Yellow Sheet on the ledge over here so that I call your name when it's time to speak. Remember, there's public forum and a couple of public hearings, so make sure you choose the correct sheet. Also, the two quasi-judicial public hearings, if you are not here represented by a lawyer or the applicant, use caution when signing those because you may not be able to speak unless that is the appropriate venue. All right, with that said, we'll now move us through presentations, there are no presentations, into time of consent agenda. Consent agenda is typically when we enact non-controversial things with a single motion, and any council member, if they wish, can pull an item for later discussion in the evening. With that said, it is my understanding, and I'll confirm this with the town manager, that there is one add-on consent agenda item which should be at our places that has the red add-on in the upper right corner. I want to make sure every council member can locate that, and we'll come back and explain it in a second. And then the other one, if you see consent agenda number 19, is a sheet on your desk as well, and I believe this is a modification.
Yes, sir.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask the town manager if he would clarify those two consent items.
So, the modification to consent 19 is to still to approve the lease agreement subject to some continued negotiation with CSX primarily in terms of insurance requirements. Their boilerplate lease requires a higher level of insurance than we normally carry. We've negotiated that out of leases before or modified it to meet our insurance limits. So, just asking for the approval of the lease and the flexibility to continue that negotiation with CSX.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the town manager on that one?
So, will we have a delayed start time to any improvements that are made as a result of that negotiation?
No, sir. That's the reason we're not pulling it off consent and coming back in two weeks. We want to keep it moving along. We hope to have it wrapped up in to the point where the mayor can sign that within the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll consider, at this time, we'll consider that to be the modified submission by the town manager for the consent agenda. On the add-on agenda, if you could give us a quick explanation?
Yes, sir. We had a motor vehicle collision involving a police vehicle. We were not at fault. This is a vehicle that ran a red light, hit one of our marked units. Everybody was okay. That's the good part of it. This consent item allows us, allows me to sign a release of liability and accepting a $25,000 payment from the insurance company for the other driver.
Okay, so the consent would be for council to authorize the town manager to sign off on that. Okay. If there are no questions on those two, let me ask if there is a motion for approving the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, consent agenda is approved. We now move to the settings of the regular meeting agenda. At this time, I know of no specific changes from here to the end of the printed agenda. Do you know of any, Mr. Town Manager?
I do not, sir.
All right, with that, I'll ask if there's a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of approving the agenda as submitted to us indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public forum. This is the time when the public speaks to us. We give you a three-minute time limit so that we are fair to everyone, and if your name is on the sheet, I will call your name. With that, for those of you who have not seen this before, we do have a little green, yellow, red light system here, and so if you are speaking or if you're watching someone else speak, that light will go yellow, which means you're about to run out of time. All right, we've got one who has signed in for public forum, and this is Samantha Olischuk. Okay.
Hi. Hello and good evening. I'm Samantha Olischuk, and this is Clay Bruce in Colville, Pitts, and we're here to thank you, the three of us, for aiding and supporting our plan to raise money for Make-A-Wish Foundation with the Apex Friendship High School Daca Program and the Academy of Engineering Program. Our goal is to raise enough money, which is typically $7,500, to grant one child's wish, and we hope that, and we believe that with your support, with from the town of Apex, that we can achieve the goal.
So, for those of you who don't know, we basically plan on like transforming the Apex Christmas tree out in front of the depot out there into like a sort of performing tree of sorts by synchronizing the lights with music, and then on select nights in December, we plan on having like groups from our school, like the chorus or dance team, come out and perform for the community. So, we know that it's a cherished tradition, but like we hope to enhance it and like bring more people downtown with our performing tree.
So, in order to keep our product going, we need to maintain our connections with the town, and we're very excited to work with the larger community for like the first time for those of us. So, we're looking forward to working with the families and supporting our businesses downtown. We know that some might consider our plan pretty ambitious, but we know that with your help that you've been giving us, we can grant a child's wish, so thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. We're very excited about it, and if I can speak on behalf of everybody, we're looking forward to the performance. If you need to borrow the tree for a few days, if you have a really long truck to put it in, no, I think maybe we'll let them work on site. Is that what we're doing? Okay, all right. That solves, that solves a lot of problems. All right, but thank you very much for coming, and we're all looking forward to it. With that said, and that concludes the public forum time, but before we leave that subject, Mr. Town Manager, maybe you can let everyone in the room know when we will be lighting that tree?
Sure, I'd love to be able to tell you that.
Do we know the day?
If I had that date in my head, I would tell you that.
Is it Friday, the first Friday of December? Diane raised her hand.
Actually, Friday, November 30th. I just looked it up today at that hot P M. It's early this year because before Saturday is when the parade is.
I apologize for catching you off-guard on that one.
You caught my toes.
But Friday, Friday, November 30th would catch a lot of people off-guard if you're not paying attention, so spread the word so we know when your deadline is, so that's good. All right, I'm confident. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Town manager, like, all right, catch me off-guard with that again. November 30th, 5:00 P. M. I'll have to put that on my calendar. All right, we now move into a time of public hearings. Public hearings, and number one is an ordinance on annexation, and this is, let's see, about 12 acres, annexation number 646, and our planning director, Diane Kinne, are you presenting?
I'm not.
Or a delegate there of? Did I catch you off-guard too? Two for two. Who's next?
You probably need to laugh.
Oh.
Didn't realize.
All right, so oriented to the site, this is Castleberry Trails off Wimberly Road, the American Tobacco Trail. It's located in the northwestern part of our jurisdiction. This property is next to American Tobacco Trail and Wimberly Road. They are part of a subdivision that's been previously approved, and so they are seeking annexation to get their construction plans that signed. Staff does recommend approval.
All right, questions for Diane? All right, this being a public hearing, I will open the public hearing, refer to the sign-in sheet. No one has signed in, so I will close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a very quick second. Any discussion for approval? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. We go to public hearing number two, and this is our quasi-judicial hearing where all of our speed grinds to a halt. Did I say that out loud? This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and as you may know, quasi-judicial hearings, besides being difficult to pronounce, are also things that we follow very strict guidelines for, and in so doing, the town attorney provides me with a script to read in advance, so I will do so now. The town council normally functions in a legislative capacity. Special use permit hearings are quasi-judicial, which means that the council acts essentially as a court of law. The burden is upon the applicant for the special use permit to put on evidence to show that they meet the criteria found in the town's UDO. Anyone opposed to the application must put on evidence of a similar kind showing the criteria have not been met. Testimony must be given under oath. All testimony and evidence provided to the council must be competent, material, and substantial. Pursuant to the North Carolina general statutes, competent evidence does not include opinion testimony of lay witnesses on certain matters. Hearsay evidence will not be admitted. The parties have the right to cross-examine witnesses and to present rebuttal evidence. The town council will apply the criteria contained in the UDO and makes decision based on the evidence and the testimony presented at the hearing. The town council will now take up the case of special use permit 18 SUP 03 for the South Landfill Public Safety Tower located at 6110 Old Smithfield Road. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask that anyone who intends to speak tonight or may speak tonight, please come up here so that the town clerk can swear you in all at once. This will be the only swearing in for this public hearing. Feel free to take it up there, too. And while they're doing that, council, just make sure you've got your checklist. Has, looks like six little boxes. Says special use permit checklist with number two at the top. Okay, who is representing the applicant tonight?
Yes, good evening.
I just want to get an identification department.
Ron Rogers, I'm the attorney for the applicant.
All right, Ron Rogers. All right, thank you. And let me find out, is there an opponent? Is there anyone representing an opponent? Thank you. All right, not seeing one. That should help move things along fairly well. So, at this time, I want each council member to describe any advanced communications about the case, whether or not you have relational or financial conflicts, and if you can decide the case impartially. As I normally do, I'll start with Councilman Jensen.
Well, I had no communications. I have no conflicts, and I believe I can actually make a reasonable decision tonight.
Thank you.
I've had no communication, no financial or relational contacts, and I can rule impartially.
I've had no communications, no conflicts, and can be impartial.
I also have had no communications. I have no conflicts, and if needed, I can vote impartially.
Same, I've had no communications and have no conflicts and can decide impartially.
I've had no communications, no conflicts, and can decide impartially.
All right, very good. Have any council members gone to view the site as a result of knowing that this was coming before us?
No.
Okay, all right, we'll take that as a no for everyone. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to come make his opening statement only. Oh, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, I normally ask staff to go first, so let me.
I was just gonna say, we don't really have an opening statement, so we'll just let this.
All right, that's fine.
Presentation, then we'll do.
All right, we'll bring staff. Who's presenting for staff? Oh, there we are. Okay, good, so.
Good evening. Just to state my credentials, my name is Shelley Mayo. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning, and I have been a professional planner with the town for five years. The project in front of you is a special use permit for a public safety tower, communication tower. It's located at the South Landfill. As you can see, it's down here at the very southern portion of our jurisdiction. The parcel is, the overall parcel is approximately 1.4, sorry, put a decimal where it shouldn't be, 145.3 acres. The actual cell tower location will be right about here, which is just off of Old Smithfield Road. The parcel's zoned L.I., and is actually along the southernmost edge of our jurisdiction, where these colors kind of fade out and go away is essentially the line we have with Holly Springs for annexation. So, this is just barely ours. The surrounding zoning districts are primarily Wake County with a Wake County R-30 here as well, and in general, these parcels are all part of the larger South Wake Landfill. The only exception to that being here in this general area, these are single-family houses and some vacant land. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on July 16, 2018. The neighborhood meeting report is attached to your staff report. The site is currently the location of South Wake Landfill, and the proposed cell tower location itself, you may or may not be able to see here, is to maintain radio contact during emergencies. This tower is proposed in order to resolve some of those communication problems. This is very similar to one that we saw at the water reclamation facility out in New Hill, and the same kind of reasoning applies for it. The applicant requests permission to build a 480-foot-tall public safety communication tower. The only associated structures are the required electrical cabinets necessary to operate the tower and the antenna. The use is required to meet any and all supplemental standards listed in Section 4.4 of the UDO. Those standards have also been listed at the end of your staff report, and the proposed plan does meet all of those. All of the RCA for the Southern Wake Landfill was dedicated when the facility was finished, and no changes to RCA are being proposed at this point. At that time, they did dedicate 26.6% of the overall parcel as RCA. This project will not connect to any town of Apex water or sewer facilities. There's no need. Section 6.13 of the UDO exempts projects that disturb less than one acre of land. This one will disturb just about .15 acres, so very small disturbance, and there's no need for any stormwater mitigation for it. The project is required to provide landscaping from off-site view. The required screening is primarily being met using the existing vegetation around the exterior of the required fence. As I said, it's about 350 feet from any property line, and at least 70 to 100 feet on each side is vegetation. There is some supplemental screening being provided using Green Giant Arbor Body. Those are shown here and here, and that's where the two access drives come up. That way, if you happen to look up the access drives, you're still seeing that screen from off-site view. The UDO requires two parking spaces for the tower, which are shown on the site plan. They're right here. The proposed public safety tower is consistent with the Apex transportation plan. The applicant's obtained permission from the underlying property owners to access the site using the private driveway from Old Smithfield Road, and the proposed special use is in compliance with the UDO. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, so at this time, are there questions on the evidence presented?
I have one. I just want to clarify, is it replacing a tower or it's a new one?
It is. It's replacing an earlier tower. There's one, and my apologies for not stating that, there's one here that's being removed. It's an older style with anchored guidelines and that kind of thing. This one will be taller and will be a newer style that does not require those guidelines.
And is the one that's already there closer to the?
Actually, so if we're looking at this diagram, it's actually kind of, my understanding is it's kind of like right here, whereas the new tower will be right about here, so that the location shift is very minimal.
Okay.
All right, let's see. Does the applicant wish to cross-examine?
No.
Okay. All right, if that's the case, then thank you very much, Ms. Mayo. At this time, I'll ask the applicant to present evidence.
Again, I'm Ron Rogers. We represent the applicant, and we will do our best to keep this meeting moving. We do not have a great deal of evidence to present. We, of course, concur with the evidence that Ms. Mayo has presented, and we'd ask that the written materials, the application and supporting materials that we've previously submitted, that those be admitted into evidence. The proposed public safety communications tower that is the subject of this special use permit hearing is part of a county-wide upgrade. In fact, on May 1 of this year, this council approved a 400-foot tower that addressed 3500 Reclamation Road near the Western Wake wastewater reclamation facility. Mr. Tom Johnson of our firm represented the county in that public hearing, and prior to the town's issuance of that special use permit, no tower was located on that property. Turning now to this site, as was just alluded to, there is already a tower on this property. The tower has been in service for nearly 30 years, and it's time for it to be retired. The equipment on the existing tower, if the application is approved, will be removed, and it will be installed on the new tower, and additional equipment will be installed as well. The new tower will, of course, replace the old one. The old one will be dismantled and removed. The new tower will comply with the current building code. And just to clarify, the height of the new tower would be 480 feet, which is identical, virtually identical, to the height of the existing tower. The new tower will be self-supporting, meaning there won't be guidelines as you see currently with the existing tower. Now, I'd like to have very quickly have Mr. John Higgins, who's the chief technology officer for Wake County, have him step forward and provide some additional information and answer any questions you may have.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. So, I'm John Higgins. I'm the IT director and chief technology officer for Wake County Information Services, and in addition to managing the IT department, I have a responsibility for the 800 megahertz public safety radio system that the majority of the first responders in Wake County use. We have approximately 7,700 radios on the system that are utilized by fire EMS and law enforcement first responders, and we average about, again, 50,000 calls per day on that system. And so, as Ron mentioned, this tower was constructed in 1990, and it's one of our two remaining Guy Wire towers that we have in the fleet of towers that we manage. And the tower has had upfits and maintenance performed on it over the years, but basically it's reaching end of life, and as part of the radio system project, we have also had all of our towers structurally analyzed to determine whether they meet current loading standards, and this tower is actually basically at max capacity. So, in order for us to be able to put the new digital technology on the tower, we would either have to structurally outfit it or replace it, and it's actually cheaper to replace the tower than to structurally outfit it, and it'd be a short lifespan even if we did that. So, we are obviously recommending replacing it. So, some of the other benefits that we will achieve from the replacement tower include lower maintenance. It is definitely cheaper to maintain more modern towers. It is a self-supported tower, so it obviously takes a lot less space, and it's basically right next to the existing tower and is the same height as mentioned. The key here is that that tower really does an excellent job of providing coverage at close to 500 feet for the Southern Wake, southern part of Wake County, and if we have to significantly move it any direction, that will definitely impact our first responders. So, we want to keep it at that height, and we definitely want to keep it in that location. So, great, based on that, I would really appreciate your support, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those at this point.
Okay, council, any questions for Mr. Higgins?
I have just a quick one. What's the diameter of this tower if it's self-supporting?
I'm gonna have to lean on one of my technical guys.
I don't want to take too much time. I'm just curious.
Will he be presenting evidence shortly, or are you here to answer questions only?
I'm here to answer questions.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm John Gornz. I'm a civil engineer, professional engineer at T E P, and the tower will be designed by a third party. However, the rule of thumb is the basis for the 480-foot tower is around 35 feet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Higgins? All right, not hearing any from council. Let me just check with staff. Do you have any questions for Mr. Higgins on his testimony? All right, thank you, Mr. Higgins. Mr. Rogers, do you have any other evidence to present?
Unless there are other technical questions that perhaps Mr. Gornz would be able to answer, we have no other evidence to present. And if I could just be very mindful of your, of your agenda and the need to move quickly here, I'll just limit my remarks to the six items on your checklist. In terms of compatibility, most of the surrounding land is light industrial. The tower will be set back, as was stated previously, over 345 feet from the nearest property line. The bulk of the 145-acre parcel on which this tower will be located is a landfill, and most of the adjoining properties are also landfill properties. The supplemental zoning standards, as Ms. Mayo has stated, the Section 4.4 standards are met here. Third, the design avoids significant adverse impacts. This will actually be an improvement over the existing tower because the existing tower has these guidelines, and you won't see that with the self-supporting tower. Fourth, minimizes environmental impact. There will only be about 6,100 square feet of soil disturbed. There will be a tree protection fence installed, and all existing wooded areas will remain undisturbed. Fifth, impact on public facilities will be negligible. There will be no water or sewer to the tower. There will be an average of one trip to, per month, to the site, and obviously, the upgrade to the public safety communication system will enhance public facilities, not harm them. And then lastly, standards of the ordinance, as again, as Ms. Mayo has stated, the application conforms to UU's layout and general development standards of the ordinance, and that's all we have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rogers. And just before we leave this, now would be a good time if you had any technical questions that you have to know in order to vote. We can ask that of Mr. Rogers, and he can refer, but otherwise, I'd say let's proceed. All right, at this time, let me ask if staff has any non-repetitive rebuttal evidence? All right, and applicant, anything that you just remembered after you sat down that you need to present? Okay. All right, and any closing arguments? All right, none? All right, very good. At this time, council members, you have your checklist in front of you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look through that as Mr. Rogers walked us through it. If you have any final burning questions, now's the time to ask. All right, not hearing anything, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and refer the matter to council for deliberation or a possible motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Rogers, we appreciate your patience. That concludes quasi-judicial hearing number two. We'll now move to quasi-judicial hearing number three. So, if it's all right with the town attorney, I'll skip the. I'll skip the long paragraph and jump straight down to the last sentence, which says, "The town council will now take up the major site plan for Hannah Imports parking improvements located at 1405 Vision Drive." And this time, thank you very much. You knew I was gonna go there, didn't you? Look at you. All right. I'll open the public hearing and ask those who will be speaking during this item or may be speaking to please come up and be sworn in. Head towards the town clerk. Uh, and council, once again, you should have a checklist that this time has 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 boxes. And it has the number 3 written in red on the top right. All right. Just before staff presents, let me make sure I know the applicant. Could you identify yourself? All right. Mr. Daniel, thank you very much. And I see that you've signed in, so that's great. All right. And any opponents for this item tonight? All right, not seeing any. We'll proceed to letting council identify. And if it's all right with the town attorney, I'll just do shorthand on this one.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Okay, sure.
Mr. Daniel, are you an attorney?
Engineer.
And the applicant on this matter is a corporation or... The problem is with quasi-judicial hearings, it's been opined that this is technically the practice of law to represent an applicant that is corporation in a quasi-judicial setting. And you don't have an attorney with you today to represent you.
You should grab that attorney that just left. Seriously. Get this thing done. I'm pausing to let you think through this for a second.
Yes. Mr. Daniel, you would be able to present evidence and answer questions. You would not be allowed to cross-examine witnesses. And technically, you could not advocate on behalf of the applicant. So do you think you could proceed under those parameters?
Presenting evidence that you're qualified to present only.
Correct.
All right. If you're willing to proceed, and I guess you're... Um, Mr. Daniel, are you, is this your client? All right, are you, would you like us to proceed under these?
Absolutely.
All right, all right, very good. Any objection? I, we'll, we may refer just to make sure, or confer just to make sure as we go, but we'll, we'll do our best to stick to that. Okay. All right. So under that advisement, we'll proceed. And with the council members, if it's okay, I'll just use shorthand since we've done this once tonight. But just to ask you if you have any issues in voting fairly tonight.
No communication, no conflicts.
Okay. Councilman Gant?
Communication, no conflicts, impartial.
All right.
Communication, no conflicts, impartial.
All right, same for me.
Likewise, no communication and no conflict.
All right.
No communication, no conflicts. I should be able to make a decision impartial.
All right, at this time, I will invite staff to come make the presentation in the opening. Yeah, make the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Sarah Rayfield, Senior Planner with the Town of Apex. I am AICP certified and have been in the planning profession for 16 years. I will be presenting the major site plan for Hannah Imports parking improvements. The site is located at 1405 Vision Drive. It's located here in this general area, north of 64, east of 55. The site here that we're looking at, this will be the subject property, is 12.5 acres. It is currently zoned, planned commercial. The 2030 land use map recommends commercial services. The zoning is consistent with that land use recommendation. Just bring you back here. So over to the west here, we have a church. We have Daniel's Restaurant. We have a convenience store with gas pump sales. Over here are Beaver Creek Apartments to the north. To the east is Castlewood subdivision. And over here also, on the developed part of the site is Hannah Import car sales. The portion of the site to be developed is currently vacant and wooded. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on July 23rd, 2018. The neighborhood meeting report is attached. And I apologize, I should have started with this. You all have a shiny new copy in front of you, paper copy. There will be updated information. It's in bold, and I will go over that when we get to that section. For following along purposes, I apologize.
Let's make sure everybody has the right one. It has the green banner at the top?
Correct. It should be your, I believe, only handout like this.
All right, thank you.
The site is proposing to add additional surface parking only for inventory use. There are no buildings or structures associated with this site plan. The only utilities that will be extended at this time is for electrical to facilitate the poles. The site will meet all stormwater control measures. Grading, there's no architectural standards in this case, but lighting, consistent with the UDO. The two amenities provided on the site are going to be picnic, excuse me, not picnic benches, just benches located over here. The RCA area required for the site, this is, the minimum should have read 20%, not 25%. They are providing 2.42 acres of RCA proposed on-site, which represents 20.29% of the project area. There is a swap of RCA going on where a little bit is being removed in this area, but is then being replaced and supplemented additionally. Therefore, there is a net increase of 1.37 acres of RCA for the overall site, including what is already developed. So just to clarify that. All buffers in the UDO have been met or exceeded. There is a 50-foot Type A buffer to the north. There is a 15-foot Type B buffer to the west. And then there is a 100-foot riparian buffer here to the east. The proposed site plan consists of 214 parking spaces, all for inventory use. There are seven handicap spaces, two of which are required. There is a public greenway easement along the east of the site here. The sidewalk is going to be extended along, this will be the drive aisle here, along here as far possible to provide for that ultimate future connection to the greenway. So that pedestrian path will be there. The site, and this will be the next part where there are some edits, so I will read that all for the transportation access and circulation. So the proposed site plan is consistent with the transportation plan. Vision Drive is shown as a future local connector to the Oak Point subdivision over here. On the current transportation plan, the proposed plan includes right-of-way dedication here for the road where the drive aisle currently exists. So this is already constructed. So there will be future right-of-way dedication here. The applicant will enter into an encroachment agreement for the driveway located within the right-of-way so that the owner can continue maintenance until such time that a public road is needed. The encroachment agreement shall be signed prior to final plat approval. This five-foot sidewalk that I mentioned earlier is being provided along this road and will provide that future pedestrian connection over here. And it is being extended as far possible. The proposed major site plan is in compliance with the standards provided in the UDO. At this time, staff recommends approval of the site plan as proposed with the additional condition located in the transportation plan access and circulation regarding the encroachment agreement and the timing of that.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll ask council if there are any cross-examination questions for Ms. Rayfield's testimony.
I've got a quick question. On the swap, you said there was a swap of 1 and 1/2 and .15. Can you point those out where those are located?
It's essentially for the, if I recall quickly, it's for the stormwater control to come in. It's just, there's .15 acres of, acre rather, of dedicated RCA that's removed in this site plan. And then there's an additional 1.05 acres. And essentially, the layout has changed from when the overall site plan was brought forward. I apologize, I don't recall the date of that. But essentially, it was to accommodate this layout that that RCA had to swap. So there is, there is no loss. There is a net gain, essentially.
So is the design change then?
Correct.
Adding that in? Okay.
I was looking at the pedestrian master plan, and it had the greenway easement. That's what I think is going to the south of the building and then along the road. And so will this sidewalk and that, this kind of arrangement, kind of change the master plan in this area?
It will help facilitate making that connection. This was something that was during the plan review process with Parks and Rec, was to get that sidewalk to extend as far east as possible.
Okay.
To make that ultimate connection.
Will that mean the easement will remain kind of south of that, but it may not be used? Is that my correct understanding?
The connection to the greenway easement from the sidewalk won't be made at this point in time?
No, I'm asking about the easement south of that, like beyond that where the sidewalk would hit, the part at the bottom of the screen here. That's not gonna go away, but it may mean that it never gets developed that way.
Correct, yes. The easement will not go away, so it would still be an option.
Okay.
Okay, I had just a quick question on the connection easement between Vision Drive, and I guess it would go into Oak Point. The only concern I have there is that stream wanders in a very wandering way. And I guess the question is, if we ever wanted to make that connection, it's a difficult thing to get past the environmental, state environmental folk. It seems to me that we might want to have a wider, or a commitment of a wider area for that road right where it gets to the stream so that we can cross it properly. It just, and I assume the developer will provide that in the future if it's necessary. Is that...
I don't know that I can...
I don't know that.
I can ask, yeah, I can't ask you, I guess. I'd have to... Whether it's necessary, I don't even know whether it's necessary. But I look at the stream, and it just looks, I'm concerned a little bit about the connectivity. All right?
Okay.
You understand what I'm asking? Because it goes straight south, and you know, it almost looks like it should wander a little bit to the, to the east. But it's not a, it's not a stopper. I'm just curious about...
Essentially, the applicant is providing right-of-way that is not a requirement at this time for the purpose of that connection. That when, I guess, when it's essentially deemed necessary, then that right-of-way will be there. The sidewalk will be in place, too.
Well, I was looking for the road, but, but I'll, I'll just drop that. I think that that connection won't be made for another 10 or 15 years. And at that point, if it has to be shifted, it can be shifted. I just, it, it's got a weird little hook in that stream right there that would make it extensive. And, okay, thank you. I've talked enough.
All right. Are there other questions from council? All right, thank you, Ms. Rayfield. At this time, rather than advocating, I'll invite Mr. Daniel to come present expert testimony on behalf of his client.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Bill Daniel. I'm a registered professional engineer. I have a planning and engineering firm that specializes in site design. That's existed for 38 years. And I'll just refrain from how long I've been practicing engineering. It's starting to get embarrassing. The project, I'd like to just hit on a few points here, factual points that are, I think, pertinent. One is the compatibility issue. This is, this proposed site plan is definitely compatible based on site planning principles. The land uses that are mentioned around the site, the church, the apartments, the commercial, the dealership, of which this is essentially an extension, and the surrounding of the proposed plan with very wide buffers, very heavily wooded buffers as well, achieves buffering that is textbook as, as far as effective, being effective in transitioning between the land uses. And since it's essentially an extension of the immediately adjacent use, it is certainly compatible to the most, to those in closest proximity to it. The criteria that is specified as far as site development standards and other provisions of the ordinance, the site plan does comply with that. We've incorporated each of those elements into the plan as proposed. And then the staff has reviewed, the town staff has reviewed, and we have responded to any suggestions and adjustments that they have requested. As far as impact on the town's facilities, there is no building. There is no population associated with this. It is additional inventory spaces. There should be no adverse impact on the town's public services or facilities. And in fact, with the right-of-way dedication and the construction of roadway or the sidewalk along the roadway, those elements will be, or those are significant elements that will be very positive in the future implementation of the town's adopted roadway connector plan. I'll be glad to answer any questions related to the design of the site, if you have any.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions from council on the design of the site?
I think it's very good design.
All right, thank you, Mr. Daniel. Does, does staff wish to ask any questions of Mr. Daniel? Okay. All right. Is there any rebuttal evidence to present, Ms. Rayfield? All right. Do you have any closing arguments? All right, Mr. Daniel, you just made your case, so I'll assume no. Okay. Mr. Daniel confirmed. I saw you nod your head, but for the record. All right, this time, council, just please refer to your checklist to see if there's any burning questions that you feel like you need to ask before we deliberate. All right, not hearing any. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Refer the matter to council for deliberation or a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Yes?
I would like to have the staff report.
Yes. All right. So without objection from the council, we'll have staff report admitted to the record. It's probably a good idea. All right, thank you for, for making that recommendation. We'll do that. At this time, we move to old business. There is none, no unfinished business. We move to new business number one. And this is a consideration for changing the primary public safety answering point, or as I'm told it's pronounced, APTHAP. And we've got Sean Purvis, the Assistant Town Manager, kicking this thing off. Mr. Purvis?
Good evening, I'm Mayor Alvin, Town Council. Well, I won't have to go through what the acronym means now that the mayor's already taken care of it. But by way of a brief background for this item, a little more than a year ago, Carrie Morseville and us embarked on the study together. A little more than a year ago, Cary, Morrisville, and us embarked on the study together to basically outline what it would take for Cary to serve as the P S A for the three towns. We're at a transition point with Raleigh-Wake, who currently serves as the P S A, with the end of that contractual agreement, so we're looking for possible options. So both the chiefs are here to actually go over some of the detail about what the benefits or challenges with this might be. You also, you do have a memo summarizing the potential cost, as well as changes that would need to occur for this to happen. Let me see if I can.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I will start with talking about how our current 911 call routing works. We'll go into some issues and concerns. We'll talk about how it will work going forward if this is approved, and then answer any of your questions. So currently, you can call from a landline or business phone at your, at your home or business, or from a cellphone. It goes into a 911 service routing, and that call actually goes to the Raleigh-Wake Emergency Communications Center, which is located in downtown Raleigh. From there, they process the call. If the call is for fire, it will be dispatched electronically to the Apex Fire Department. If it is for law enforcement, the call itself will be transferred to the Apex Communication Center, right here on Saunders Street, and our staff will dispatch to our Apex Police Units. Our comm center here in Apex will also pick up the fire department call status monitoring, and we will manage that incident from our comm center here. This is all based on an interlocal agreement that was signed in 1972 with the Raleigh-Wake Emergency Communication Center. That ILA is in the process of being revised. They've been working on it now for about two or three years. It has met with some significant concern from our public safety partners across the county, mainly because it does not give the service providers in fire, law enforcement, EMS, and so on, much of a voice to step up and help determine how the service will be provided. And we're concerned that that level will not meet our expectations or the expectations of our community. So we are looking to improve our overall communication, both operationally among, among public safety partners, not only within Apex, but in mutual aid circumstances where we have other jurisdictions helping us, or we are helping them. Also administratively, when we're dealing with how the function actually works, we're looking to increase that overall communication as well. Ultimately, we want to achieve a partnership that will enhance our service delivery as our call volume grows, as our jurisdiction grows, and as our needs grow. We want to increase the responsiveness to what our needs are, and what the expectations we have of the service provider for us, and the expectations that our community has of their public safety providers. Currently, one of the bigger concerns is that we do not have a backup solution. We did for quite some time. Raleigh-Wake provided a backup where if we would have to evacuate our center, or close it down for one reason or another, we could very quickly reestablish that operation in a center operated by Raleigh-Wake. That was removed without our input or discussion, or knowledge for that matter, a year or so ago, and that, we do not have that functionality currently. We have a workable solution. It is not an optimal solution, and we are looking to make it an optimal solution in case we did have an operation where we would have to, have to leave. The new interlocal agreement proposed by Raleigh-Wake does not give much decision-making authority to Apex or to any providers of our size and, and our function in the system. If we were to agree to that, we would be locked into a term of 10 years, and all the financial aspects that go into that as well for that period of time. So ultimately, we did not believe that was an agreement that was in the best interest of our citizens, so we started looking at other operations.
So another challenge that we have is the way Raleigh-Wake Emergency Communication Center works is, as far from the fire aspect, it recognizes two fire departments, the City of Raleigh Fire Department and Wake County Fire Department, of which we are one of the 17 entities, fire departments that make up the county, what was considered to be the county fire department. Out of that 17, it's a very disparate collection of fire departments. From a small, excuse me, volunteer fire department in eastern, in the eastern part of the county over to us, we're pretty much the largest, mainly municipal fire department that serviced within that Wake County 17 grouping. We, we had a situation where Morrisville had a fire, they had a structured fire, their battalion chief called for a second alarm. We were monitoring, we were in class at the fire station, we were monitoring the radio listening, because I did have one unit responding to assist, and the battalion chief called for a second alarm. Second alarm says, I need more help. We don't have enough, I need more. After about seven or eight minutes of getting nothing from Raleigh-Wake, I went and I made a phone call straight to the center, and I said, are you, did you hear the request for a second alarm? The dispatcher said, I didn't get a recommendation, which means whenever she put it in, it didn't come up with units. So instead of asking for what she needed, or what they needed on scene, they did nothing. And so I asked her to contact them on scene, so we, we got that situation handled. The problem is, whenever I went back to the county fire chiefs, because of this such a disparate grouping of fire departments, and I basically chastised the fire chiefs that we need to come up with a second alarm. So what is a second alarm? When you call for help, what do you get? That's been two years ago, and I can't make it happen. It's very frustrating, to be honest with you. Unit recommendation changes. A cut gas line is going to be my example. Not long after I got here, we got dispatched to a contractor, cut a gas line in, in the ground, residential gas line. Typically, we only have one unit dispatched. Well, whenever you have those, you need to block off the streets to keep people from driving in, and so I asked, and we got the dispatch and got the recommendation, which was what is being requested, or what's being sent. We got an increase to say four trucks. That went for about a year, then suddenly, we had a confirmed cut gas line, and it reduced back to one truck. And I was like, what happened? And the communications committee, which is a subcommittee of the Fire Commission, the Wake County Fire Commission, made the change back because the increased workload, or the increased response was causing an increased workload, which is a challenge for many of the other departments in that 17 grouping, of which we are considered to be one. And then the last thing I'll say, these are the issues that we have is poor awareness due to lack of CAD notes. So whenever a call comes in, we get them over a computer on the truck, we call it an MDT or MDC, it could go either way. And that should tell us what we're dispatched to. I mean, so we, we know we're dispatched to, let's say, a difficulty breathing call. There are notes that are taken that EMS gets, which might provide some more additional information through the EMD process, what, kind of what causes it, some history or something like that. We're not getting that consistently currently. And that, that causes some issues, because sometimes we're dispatched to things where we actually need to stage, because it could be a dangerous environment if it's an assault or something like that. So that's really important to us. So why do we want to make this change? What do we expect out of this change? So number one, 17 departments will be reduced to three. Those will be Cary, Apex, and Morrisville being dispatched. All three of our fire departments act very similarly. We're different scales, from, you know, Cary being larger than we are, Morrisville being slightly smaller than we are. But our mindsets, accreditation, things like that, continuous improvement philosophy, we are all of one mindset in those areas, so we work really well together, excuse me, together. So the fire departments, we can set our own recommendations. So we actually have a meeting on Thursday to discuss that very thing, to where we can set on a structured fire, this is what we want to go. I call it an effective response force. What do we need dispatched to certain events? And then Cary provides information verbally to responders while en route, and also through CAD notes. As Cary's continuing to process the call, they're verbally providing additional information. The reason, if you saw how it happens here, because our call is serviced or handled by Apex once it's dispatched, Apex doesn't have the notes, so Apex Communications, they don't have the notes as well. So we, again, we will increase our situational awareness, which will increase safety. But this slide is why, truly why we're standing here. If you look at this chart, NFPA standard for dispatching says, 90% of emergency alarm processing shall be completed within 64 seconds. That's, that's the national goal. That, that's a difficult goal to maintain. So we really wish you for, we're really pleased with the 90 second. That's kind of our, our realistic goal, that we, we really think is realistic and we expect. As you can see, from Raleigh-Wake from 2016 to 18, it's inconsistent. 183 seconds, 162 seconds, and 190 seconds. All these are measured in fractals, so it's 90% of the time. So 90% of the time, they're dispatched within 183 seconds, that type thing. If you look at Cary's numbers, 121, 94, and 85. And you see it's 62 seconds faster, 68 seconds faster, and 105 seconds faster. So currently, up to date on 2018, structured fire calls dispatched within Cary are dispatched at the 90th percentile, 105 seconds faster than they are in, for the Apex experience this year. 105 seconds is a big deal. I don't want to go down the path of what could be, but just, fire grows exponentially, it's a big deal. And this is just a graphical representation to show the trend line. You know, we, we always want to see continuous improvements of that trend line down towards the, the goal or the expectation, which is the bottom line of that 64 seconds. So we, it really shows continuous improvement that we're closing that gap.
So what does this Cary, Apex, and Morrisville partnership provide? It has a different, slightly different way the, the call will be handled. It's still the same phone call, still to a same 911 type of system. The call would then be received at the Cary Police Department Center. If it is for fire, they will dispatch, and as you heard from the fire chief, they will maintain the notes, and they will maintain the conversation with responding fire units. If it's for law enforcement, it will go to our center, and it will be handled by our staff just the same as it is today. What that does, though, also significantly enhances our ability to manage the workflow. Cary and Apex and Morrisville operate almost all on the same records management system and the same computer-aided dispatch system. In the next few months, we will be on the same system as Cary, and the workflow going from their center to our center will be so much more, it'll, it'll be more efficient, it will have more information, and it will make our workflow easier, because all that information that Cary takes in will populate on our screens, and we don't have to ask the call the same questions or enter all that back in. It aligns our operations with a true partner, and a partnering agency that shares our values and our vision of where we want to go as we grow. Supports our ability to provide that consistent public safety service, and with the increase in population and in area, this has some growth built into it that will help us serve as the town grows. And as one of three agencies in this system, it greatly improves our ability to participate in the decision-making process and make sure that all of the operations work for all three partners, which currently we do not have.
So the assumption is improved service, not just for the citizens of Apex, based on what we know Cary has provided currently versus what we receive. So my role is to tell you then what that costs. So there is upfront cost, as you heard Chief Letney say, where most of our equipment and most of our technology is the same, but there are some transitions that we have to make to make sure we are interoperable with them. The upfront cost for this is roughly $170,000. Now, we do have, there is a gullway cost of about 47 that we will no longer have to do. That was going to be required for some upgrades to make sure we aligned with Raleigh-Wake. So if you back that out, you're sitting at about $123,000 that would be required to make sure we are interoperable with Cary. That's our estimate to date off of what we've gone through. The study helped us get to that. We've also been working, the study wrapped up in July, so even since then, IT for all three towns, police, fire, we've met. As we're on weekly calls now, as we continue to go through and keep an update on each other's progress moving forward. On an annual basis, you can see the comparison. Annually, it's basically a push. It was about $500 more a year to get the, the service from Cary that we currently get from Raleigh-Wake in terms of the P S A. Hopefully, improved service is what we're trying to achieve. So annually, it's a wash. It's a matter of the upfront cost and council's decision to move forward. So the two asks that we had tonight were, one, authorization to notify Raleigh-Wake that we were proceeding with transferring our, transitioning our P S A to Cary, if council so chooses. And if you so choose, the follow-up also includes a budget amendment for $200,000 to make sure we have adequate funds to go forward with all the technology that's needed at this time to be interoperable with Cary. We do have a target of March?
5th.
March 5th. That target comes from the fact that Raleigh-Wake and all their changes are coming in a week later on March 12th, so we're trying to make sure we line up with them. There's still, there will still be logistics to work through with Raleigh-Wake. We've met with them, they've known about this process, they've been included on it. So logistics will, are continuing to be worked out, and will continue to do so. But everybody, all three towns, as far as Cary, Morrisville, and Apex have continued to do what we can to make sure we move as smoothly as possible and provide the best public safety service for our citizens. And we're here to answer any questions you have, and I believe Rick Thomas is here, too. So Rick manages our communications at 911, so it's been tremendous help as we move through this process.
All right, thank you, Sean. Let me check and see, do any council members have questions?
I have a couple. So you were, you were talking about the 10-year contract being kind of long and difficult to adjust, but is there, is there a contract length that you're shooting for, for this one?
So we're, right now, actually, what we're doing right now in our weekly meetings with Cary and Morrisville is we're working through an interlocal agreement with them. We do not, if we move forward, we hope to have a draft for council's consideration, which would require your approval in early January. At this point, the, what's been recommended is a five-year with Cary, and then there's annual renewals, but no one wants to be locked in more than five years. And so that's a mutual agreement amongst all three communities. Some other aspects of that interlocal agreement, just while we're talking about it, is right now with the, if we, the Raleigh-Wake contract, you saw it mentioned that we have no real authority or voting power in that, it's because a large, over 50% is controlled by Raleigh. So therefore, even if everybody else said one thing, one entity actually controls everything that still happens, this partnership is equal three ways. Despite that Cary's bigger than us, and we're bigger than Morrisville, it's three votes. There'd be two representatives from each department on a committee to help shape the decisions moving forward. So the idea is to make it as equal as possible, those three, five, five years versus the 10, answer your question, Mr. Daniel.
Okay. And if Holly Springs and Fuquay want to join, is that going to be allowed, or how would that be approached?
We haven't gotten that far. That's, that's up to them, and I don't know, you know, there'd be technical things to work out. I can't really speak to that. I mean, at this point, they're still operating with Raleigh-Wake.
We have had some discussions with Holly Springs about sharing some services we currently share, records management, and that partnership is going very well. We have not had the conversation about anyone else joining this partnership. However, it would depend on what capacity Cary has, what the cost would be, and the technology would be to get further out towns on the same system. The technology can exist, because we are migrating to the same CAD system and the same records management system. So the backend will, will be in place, but whether that happens in the future will have to be further discussions.
I have a question. I'm not sure who it's for, but you mentioned the system, and Wake County has Raleigh, and then 17 other municipalities?
Yes, sir.
So did Cary just make the investment in their system to allow something like this to happen, or?
So I'm going to have to ask, so whenever Cary went away and did their own thing, it was prior to me coming in this area, so I'm not familiar. Do you have any background on that, Rick?
Just a clarification while you're coming up, Rick. Is this a question about how did Cary become a P S A?
Correct.
Is that kind of what we're asking here? Okay.
I can't honestly answer that, in Wake County.
Come on up to the mic, so we can all hear you.
I don't know the dates when that happened. Cary Police, Holly Springs Police, and Raleigh-Wake are the three primary P S A's in Wake County. But I'm not sure when Apex have, became their own primary. I don't have those dates. Or Cary, I'm sorry.
Cary, okay. Okay. So I guess a follow-up to Mr. Gant's question. So I guess if, if our neighboring communities are interested over the next couple of years, they would approach the group and say, hey, we want to join, talk about joining your guys' system. I guess that's the process.
So it would be, in my assumption, the way that ILA is currently, interlocal agreements currently being drafted would be toward that, I'm going to call it a board of directors, I don't know that we actually have a true name to that yet, but let's say a board of directors of this particular system. I would think it would have to be presented to them.
I would think it would have to be presented to them, and then that decision would be made. And I think it does include town managers are recommended right now and a designated type of.
So even to get to this point for us, I mean, we went through the study with Effie Kimball, it's mentioned in your, I mean, it's an outside consultant firm that came in. And the goal of their study was not, like, can, should we make the switch or anything? The assumption was already made, okay, you should be able to have better service, what would it cost? Could CARRY feasibly do it? And, because they already have their own PSAP. So the study focused on what would CARRY need to enhance to do it, what would Morrisville and Apex need to chip in and make interoperability to do it. So that's what the study focused on. From that, we have recently, we have recommended resources, what those costs are, as well as a potential operating model for us to, a payment model for us to participate. So that would have to be done for another, whether it's Holly Springs, whoever it may be, to come into the group with really what's their share portion, to make sure they can connect and to maintain interoperability. Further apart, as much as you think that we have this 120 cost, Morrisville actually is a little higher than us because their fire and police are coming on, and we already have police as a second, as a PSAP. CARRY actually has a, is footing a huge chunk of this operation, so.
So you asked for a $200,000 budget amendment, and the projected cost is 123?
Well, it's upfront, it's 170. We have a go-away cost of 47 that we were going to have to spend, that we no longer said comes back to 123. That was actually going to be in next year's budget, not the current year, but it'll wash out. 170, but actually, we found out this morning, we confirmed there's another 10, so that's really 180. So we're just trying to make sure we have a little wiggle room as we still work through the logistics on the.
So the 200s of the cap and anything?
That's what we're hoping.
There.
Yep, that's the hope. Yes, sir, Mr. Moore.
Anything else? All right. All right, thank you, thank you very much. And as we consider this and deliberate, you know, I appreciated all the work that went into this, especially considering how it spans multiple people's tenures, and we've been asking for assistance and help over time, and we just aren't getting the participation level. And while it would be nice to work out the big system problems, we've, I remain, I sit here convinced that since our technology is modern, since our processes are current, since our goals of continuous improvement, which I think are very important, are there. You know, what's disturbing is when you saw the chart actually went the wrong way for Raleigh-Wake, that just says that continuous improvement is not part of their culture. Whether they say it is or not, the data doesn't show it. And if you implement things correctly, your data's going to reflect your culture. I'm excited about this opportunity for us to make this improvement. You had me at 62 seconds, never mind 105, because I can't picture making a 911 call and then trying to count 62 Mississippi's before somebody moves to make a difference. And that's essentially what happens. And I know you were refraining from going that direction, but I'll pick that torch up if you don't mind, because to me, this is a small investment to make. The operating costs are the wash, and that would be the part that would concern me from a cost perspective. If we were going to end up spending, you know, a certain large number of dollars per year, more than we would otherwise, then we would have to scrutinize it a little bit more. But if we can make a one-time change and essentially our operating costs are basically the same, this is a big investment improvement. And besides the chiefs knowing that they can do their job and they can improve their own metrics, which they, I'm sure, would love to see, the impact to the safety and security of Apex citizens is huge. And I'd strongly encourage everybody to support this plan.
Yeah, I mean, I have to say, if we're going to have less time loss, less life and property loss, more say in how things go, and better communication, I mean, what's the downside?
I would think this might improve insurance costs for homeowners as a result of.
It'd be nice if it would.
Better response. I don't know, but maybe it will. I'd just like to say, really a great presentation. You did an outstanding job, and I think it makes it pretty easy for the rest of us to make a decision on this.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there, but I wanted to go ahead and get the motion on the table.
No, I agree, and having listened to a story about, you know, the calls are made, and you're telling the story also, it's helped for me to see what the impact is too by hearing the story.
Now, I'd like, one house saved would be that amount of money that we're spending one time, so. Hopefully, it will be, of course, yeah, lives and property, definitely.
All right, thank you. And just one final thought, this is real from me. In 1981, our house burned, and we had Apex Fire and Fairview Fire come to work, because that was about all that was around. And it's very real for me because I was evacuating the house that was on fire at the time. So it means a lot to me to know how many seconds tick away. With that, thanks for your indulgence. I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thanks again.
I just wanted, if I may, just publicly acknowledge the work of this team. Sean.
Please do.
You know, I had a conversation with a Morrisville town manager a couple of years ago, and just thought, thinking about this very abstractly, when I realized it was going to take real work, I gave it to Sean to do. And he and the public safety chiefs and their teams put a lot of very detailed thought into this. This was not a decision that we rushed to. There was a lot of meetings, a lot of time spent, and just want to acknowledge Sean's leadership and the leadership of the chiefs and their teams in this. And thank you, council, for listening to the information, listening to the stories, and making this move on behalf of the citizens.
That's great. And it wouldn't be a bad idea to follow up in, you know, five, six months and let us know where we're at, how things are going. I think we'd be interested in knowing. If nothing else, for the people of Apex to be aware, I think that's very important. All right, very good. Thank you all, thank you all. We'll now move to new business number two, and I'll just turn the floor over to Councilman Jensen. This is your item.
Okay. I hope you all have a chance to read the blurb on our agenda. What the PACE program is, property assessed clean energy, it allows, it enables the town to lend money to private citizens, to businesses for renewable energy-type items. And then the money comes, then there is a tax assessment increase on the property to get the money coming back through taxes. And there's 10 to 15-year period that that takes place. I looked at, you know, one of the problems with solar is that it's hard to get financing sometimes, and people hesitate, and the financing can be more expensive. I think the town can make it less expensive. I was looking at what our bonds costs were this last time around, and it was 3%. We are getting about 2% on the money that we lend to the banks. So, you know, if we took some of the money that we're lending to the banks and provided this service to homeowners and businesses at, say, 4% or 5%, we're going to be making some money, more money on our investments than we would by loaning it to the bank. And it's very secure. To me, it's very secure, and staff will have to work this out. When you put the assessment into the taxes, people are always going to pay taxes on their property. If somebody goes bankrupt and dumps the property, that property still has the taxes on it. It's not going to change. So, and that's, that makes it secure. And the other part that makes it very nice is if a person invests, a homeowner, say, invests in a solar PV program, project, and then wants to sell their house in three years, well, if that financing actually is coming, for the system actually comes through taxes, that goes on to the next owner of the property who's getting the benefit of the system. So I think it's all the way around, it's a fair thing. And all I'm asking tonight is that council ask staff to take and spend some staff time to take a look at this and give us some recommendations.
A quick question for, because I only just learned about this from the conversation. How, do you know if, because I don't know, do we know if new owners of property that have these assessments, if there's a legal requirement in place with real estate in order to make them aware of that assessment? I know a lot of people, especially lenders and real estate agents, will assume a certain tax rate based on location, and they may not. I don't know, I don't know to what degree that's transparent. Do you have any awareness?
I don't know either, but we can ask staff to clarify that. But there is a lien against the property in effect for the taxes, is the way I understand the way the program works. So there is information there, that there is a lien on that property itself.
Okay.
I think that's covered.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But it's, this all started, actually, and I hate to say it, on the left coast in California, but it's been, it's become pretty popular there. There, they use bank loans to support the project a lot of times, which means the interest rate is higher. But in North Carolina, we're required to use our own funds. We cannot work with the bank and have the bank loan the money to the people and then the tax, the repayment coming through taxes. It gets too complex anyhow. I think what North Carolina has and what we can do, and being as we have reserve funds and we can make money, I think it's something to really look at. That's all.
Another question, does this mean that our town would have to be certified or registered as a solar city for that to happen?
You know, I don't know. That's a good question for staff to take a look at. I don't believe we would, I don't see how it would come together in that situation.
Can we be an electric city and a solar city at the same time?
I'd have to get a full understanding of what a solar city is. Yes, we're going to have to be an electric city, that's for darn sure. And if we can't be a solar city and electric city, then we're stuck with electric city.
Can I, and so are you, are you proposing to look into it just for solar? I know there was an energy.
I did put for solar, but for, it's basically for renewable energy, geothermal heating and cooling. They can, and we can list out what we feel that we should support. I'm not sure you want to get down into installation of houses and stuff like that, but to keep it clean, I would, I would think, solar energy and geothermal.
And are you asking to look at it as for commercial and residential?
Both commercial and residential.
And new build and existing homes both?
Yes.
So like when we've been talking to some of the developers about installing solar PV, could they take part in that program?
They could take part, or the homeowner can take part in that program, I would think. Once again, that's, that's why the request is here to ask staff to sort through that. But I think that your question is absolutely right on, and I think it can be done.
And also, would there, do you foresee a kind of ramping up of the program, or would it kind of be just theoretically a bond that would be a certain amount of money and we just start going for it?
Well, I think we can set aside a certain amount of money, and it's going to be a ramp up because people are only going to come into using it when they, when they need it or when it's, when they realize it's available. So I wouldn't stick a huge amount of money on it to begin with, but to take a look at it and get the thing working properly. I think we'd probably want to put in 250,000 or something like that available, and then see how the program works and go from there. Can I make the motion to approve?
If you want, yeah.
If nobody else, okay, I mean, I didn't hear from anybody else, I was getting concerned.
You can make the motion anytime you like.
Now, I was just trying to see if I could find more about, I think, yeah, I'd like to know more about other places, I guess, who've done similarly, and also thinking about looking into long session in the General Assembly, you know, is there something, is there some help, you know, with this? And I don't, and I don't know the answer to that, if there's some guidances that could also help us that are.
The legislation that allows for this, I think, took place around 2007 or something like that. Now, no, to my knowledge, no town in North Carolina has done this. But I look at it and I think, and I'm sure you all have too, it makes a lot of sense to certainly pursue it and see where we can, what we can do. As I mentioned, it's fairly popular out in California, and I tried to do a quick search, but then my power went down today.
If only you had a solid panel.
So it saved you guys from my search.
But it was estimated to be down for four hours, and it was back within an hour and a half.
It was, it was, but you know, one of these situations where I always crassenate, wait till the last minute, and then when something disastrous happens, I'm dead in the water. I was dead in the water.
And obviously, any kind of tax credits, we'd kind of have to figure out, you know, if there are tax credits for solar, how that would be applied to certain people.
Yeah, and we can look at that and say, you know, we're going to lend 70% of the system because they're getting 30% in tax credits or something like that. We could do that, I'm, I'm, I think maybe we might want to loan on the whole thing and then let them get their tax credits because it's going to go against their, their taxes anyhow. The downside, I guess, there, and we can work that out later, the downside there is the person who puts it in gets the tax credits. If they sell their house three years later, that next person doesn't get any tax credits, but they assume the loan. So I think we need to look at that. I think that's absolutely, really a good question for staff to take a look at and see if we set the program up so that we lend 70%. I'd rather lend 100% personally, but let's look at the deal.
I'll second the motion to.
Okay, thank you. Thank God. We're halfway there.
So just to be clear, the motion is to ask staff to explore and investigate what it would take for the town of Apex to implement a PACE financing program, to evaluate the legality of it, the requirements, the restrictions.
How we have to coordinate with Wake County Tax Assessor.
Right, all that coordination and how that, how that also is impacted as an electric cities, city, whether or not that factors in at all. And maybe, maybe they, and this is where we can work on whether or not we're biting the whole apple or slice it in half and try, see what some of the high-level stuff is, and maybe you could do an intermediate, you know, report on some aspects, if it looks like things are going in the right direction or if it's looking really difficult. And I'll let you, I'll let the town, assuming this goes through, but I'm trying to shape the motion here so that town staff know what they're being asked. But let me, does that, does that sound reasonable where we're going?
Yes, we need to investigate the whole thing, and as I mentioned with Wake County Tax Assessor, to make sure how we, how we put the liens on and that sort of stuff. We need the whole program.
And the manager has something?
Just, I wonder, because of the council's committee structure, would it be better to let us gather a bunch of information, take it to a committee, interact with the committee, go back and refine it more, and then bring it back to the full council? Or do you want?
No, that may, that may make sense.
The intermediate steps to come back.
Yeah, that may make sense.
Bring it to my committee, bring it to the environmental committee.
Environmental committee? All right, this is a financing program.
Right, but it's, isn't it not environmental?
It's environmental, too.
So you want to do a joint?
We might, yes.
Well, if you're going to have four, you might as well have.
I mean, you can, you could.
Whatever the council would like to do.
I don't know.
If you would, well, okay, and I'm not trying to take ownership of it, but the environmental aspect, what decisions would you expect to make that doesn't involve finance? I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy if you feel like there's an environmental aspect that you want to explore.
I mean, I'm happy for it to be in your committee because you have the. I mean, I'm happy for it to be in your committee because you have to call the meetings.
I know. I'm not trying to-
I think you're right. I think there's intrinsic environmental value in doing this, but the part that's the question.
Pick one. Otherwise, it's a workshop.
Well, the, yeah, the question, if the, if the question was one of, is there environmental benefit? But I don't know that that's in question in this case. I think that-
Okay.
If that's, if that's acceptable. Okay. But-
Or bring it back to the whole council. I'm just, I'm just-
Yeah.
I think a committee's fine. I think committee makes more sense.
Okay.
And I was just looking up the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, and I don't work on housing, I don't work on healthcare, but I would maybe seek out and see if there's some of the question that Mr. Jensen mentioned about the person sells a home, that this person has the loan but doesn't have the tax credits. Perhaps the Housing Finance Agency could guide you on that. I don't know if you've ever reached out to them on anything.
No, I've not.
Well, let's do, let's do this, while we have the motion and the second, before we determine exactly how we're going to have staff come back, let's see, first of all, if we want staff to go work on this. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion to have staff go investigate? None? Okay.
I think, to add to kind of the discussion, I'd like to see through this exploration process what an example of this looks like. If I buy a $25,000 system and I put a lien on, like what has that, what interest rate are we charging, you know, blah, blah, then it's-
Okay. All right.
Example of some of it.
Okay. All right.
And staff can come back in two, three, or a month or two with questions for us to make a decision if we need to.
All right. Well, let's take, let's take the vote to ask staff to explore what that means for Apex. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. That passes unanimously. And if, if council's okay with this, let's let the town manager work on a little bit and maybe follow up with this. Because I think I'd like to give him a little bit of flexibility here. So if he's looking into it and he says, there's a lot of financial ramifications and I'd really like to take it to finance committee, then I wouldn't mind if he, if I give him that sort of call. If he says, actually, you know, if you come back and say, actually, I've got some information that I'd like to bring to the council specifically. I want to give the town manager a little bit of flexibility on making that decision.
Mayor, that sounds like real work. You might want to give that to Sean.
Oh.
You're in my mind, Mr. Moore.
Actually, you probably already did.
Yeah. No, no.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. All right. Does anybody object if we, if we let the town manager kind of come back and make a recommendation on what he wants to do next?
No, I have no objection, but as much flexibility as they need.
All right. Cool. All right. Very good. Thanks very much. And that takes us now to the final item on our agenda, which is a closed session to consult with the town attorney for handling the matter of Town of Apex versus Beverly Rubin. Is there a motion?
Remove.
And second, all right, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. We're now going into closed session and let everyone who's here be advised that we have no further items to discuss in open session. We will be in closed session now.